Good evening, everybody. It is September 29th. This is the Town of Rhinebeck regular town board meeting. If anyone would like to say the pledge, you can stand and do so. Or you can just stand. Or you can do what you want.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your honor for which it stands one nation under our own. And this is all in full integrity.
Thank you. We have a lot to get through tonight. We have three public hearings and a couple of wing ding or discussion items. Later we can do it. I would like a motion for approval of our prior minutes from our meeting on October 4th. Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Would you, Alan, have a second? Any data? Are there any comments or views from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Joan?
Could you acknowledge that I presented the board with the...
Yes, yes, thank you. Today is the 29th. Tomorrow is the last day, I think, to lay down the budgets. And Joan has laid it down in front of you all now. So you have my supervisor's 2026 tentative budget. We'll talk about it further on in the meeting because we're going to schedule our public hearings. But we're in good shape and we're spending less money this year than the next money because we have spent down a lot of our fund balance as we can over the past five years. So is that okay, Joan?
Perfect, thank you.
We have three public hearings tonight. We have a public hearing for a local law regarding vehicles and traffic. We have a public hearing to amend our short-term rental law. And we have a public hearing for some zoning amendments, which are mostly fixes and, would you say, non-substantive changes, Kim?
Yeah, mainly just clarifications and a little bit more authority for the zoning board and office.
Great. So I'm going to open all three public hearings, tabs one, two, and three. And I guess we'll go first with vehicles and traffic. Tab one, local law to be determined of 2025. This is a local law to amend the town code, chapter 113, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, and to add provisions regarding parking, standing, and stopping, traffic regulations, removal and storage of vehicles, and penalties for traffic infractions, including parking violations. Before I turn it over to Michael Barfield, attorney, who's worked on this for us. None of our law was codified here in Rhine Cliff, up Rhinebeck. So the only law that we had was no parking during the winter months from November 1st to April 15th. Bob, from what time to what time?
November 1st to April 15th.
Yeah, from 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM, something like that. That's the only law because it's a state law. So what this is, is a framework to allow us to adopt additional laws via resolution. But I'm going to let Michael Barfield take it over.
Thank you, Supervisor. What Supervisor said is exactly correct. This is a framework, this is a skeleton that establishes pretty standard, basic traffic regulations. So that's everything from no parking, no stopping, no standing, whether that's all at the time or certain times, to stop signs, yield signs, homeways streets, things of that nature. And as the supervisor noted, under this proposal of the law, the town board could then adopt regulations for each of those categories over time as the public and board sees fit.
We are, we do have a resolution to adopt some parking regulations for Rhine Cliff, but I want to take comments on this specific framework, which I think is pretty not controversial because it, we're not adopting anything other than the right to adopt specific regulations via resolution. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
So does anybody have any comments regarding this local law to amend town code, chapter 113, entitled Vehicles and Traffic?
Aye.
Yeah.
Okay. And mostly it's minor technical stuff, huh? Michael, in 113, nine, and 10, there are references to following streets. As though there should be street names in our, or I misunderstood.
So, and I guess maybe that is a good point of clarification.
I'm sorry, 113, 10?
Nine and 10.
Yes. So the way that this is structured is each of the sections sets forth the type of regulation. So for example, 113, nine, you can't park at certain hours. But by reference, they, it incorporates the system of schedules that are found at the end of the chapter, which is the veritas articles in Article 6. So for example, 113, nine, talks about time of parking, and that would correspond to schedule five, which is blank in the draft. And when the town adopts regulations by resolution, they will be substituted into those blanks. So the following streets will reference something listed in that schedule.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
I have a few typos and little things like that. Should I take that off the mic separately rather than now, or do we have to go to...
Typos? Are they non-substantive?
If it's a non-substantive issue, we're happy to make changes.
We can do it.
You can make it with the clerk and we can adopt it.
Okay, good. Yeah, they are. There's one that is not, and that is not Meyer or the type or that kind of... And that's with regard to the possible imprisonments for parking violations. It seems very draconian, 113, 20. Forty-five days in jail. Yeah, I know. Multiple violations and all that, but they really seem harsh. I wonder if we really mean that.
I mean, really, that's up to the board, to confer jurisdiction in your local court. These are all misdemeanors that could be punishable by a fine, imprisonment, or both. It's pretty standard that, at least in Orange and Dutchess counties, that there be some sort of imprisonment. No one that I'm aware of has ever been in prison for a traffic violation, but...
It's at the judge's discretion.
It's at the judge's discretion, right? It's up to...
But we call for parking violations, 15, 45, and 90 possible days of imprisonment. I can't support that. That's just too harsh.
I'm fine with leaving it to the judge's discretion.
Yeah.
I would be fine taking it out because I think, like, it's not likely to be an issue here, but it's certainly the case in some places that having kind of these footfall issues where someone then struggles to pay a fine, it then becomes, you know...
It's at the judge's discretion.
Right.
But we're not setting the fine.
But let's say the judge, like, that depends on the judge not having a...
Do you want to leave it or amend it?
Can we just, we take out the jail time?
Chad, leave or...
I'd like to leave it because it's templated to the county and Ulster as well. It's just a following code and a framework. It's not, it's not a declaration of punishment. It's not our decision to make the framework. It's our decision to incorporate it into our system, which is consistent with the rest of the county. And I think that's probably the best way to leave. Not, I agree with your point, it is, but these are templated from that, not that we're coming up with new ones. That's all.
Giving a judge authority to send somebody to jail for 15 days on a traffic violation, I won't vote for that.
You don't have to.
And it's worse, there are others.
If you guys want to talk, please raise your hand and I'll, you know, I'll...
Sure.
So we can do this.
Sure.
Alan, change or stay?
I think we ought to take it out. I worry about judges who will look to do revenge, like some of them are doing now.
So this should be struck from...
So if the board would like to amend this local law, that's perfectly acceptable. We'll hold your town hearing, I mean, your public hearing tonight. You continue the public hearing through another day. We amend it, it would be on the legislative process, that's appropriate. And then you could go on the amended motion.
Okay. So we're going to hold this open until our next meeting on October, is it 23rd, Joan?
Sorry.
I did say the 27th, so it probably would be an earlier one, right?
Yeah, I'd say 27.
We could do it at a budget public hearing, but I think we should do it at a regular town board meeting. So let's hold it open until October 22nd.
Seven.
Seven.
Seven. Anything else? I, any other public comment? We're going to hold this open until the 27th, so to amend it. Okay. Tab two, local law, oh, I'm sorry, share it with me. Local law to be decided in the year 2025, a local law to repeal town code, chapter 125, Article 5, Section 125, 61, et cetera, entitled Short-Term Rentals and enact a new town code, chapter 125, Article 15, Sections 125 through 144, through 125 and 154, entitled Short-Term Rentals. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Oh, no. We've opened this, sir. Have we opened it publicly? Did I motion to...
You motioned to...
Okay.
Oh, no.
Okay, I did. Are there any... Michael, why don't you explain why we're amending our short-term rental law for the third time?
Second time that I'm aware of.
Okay.
But for the most part, these are non-substantive amendments. The local law was, excuse me, the short-term rental law was passed in pieces last year. This takes everything that the board already passed, repeals it and reenacts it in its own section of the town code, which is really just for usability purposes. It also clarifies some insurance requirements and makes it clear that the town needs to be named as an additional insured on general liability policies for short-term rental, I guess businesses, maybe it's not the right word, but people who want to rent their homes as short-term rentals. The idea there is that once you enter into a commercial marketplace, it's common where the town could also be a defendant in a lawsuit if something goes wrong based on a permit the town issued, that the town would be an additional insured, meaning that the person who runs the short-term rental, their insurance company would defend the town and possibly the taxpayer. And then the third thing is it just clarifies certain language regarding enforcement. There was some question, I think, with the zoning administrator about whether operating short-term rental without a permit at all was a violation of your short-term rental law. And it was certainly intended to be, so it really just cleaned up some language and some clarifications.
So operating a short-term rental without a license is an infringement?
Correct.
Okay. Are there any comments from the public regarding this? Any comments or questions from the board? We have to keep this open too, Joan? We've received comment back from the county or... Are you sure nobody wants to say anything in public, a short-term fix?
Could I ask some questions about the law?
We can take comment.
Okay. So no questions?
Go ahead.
Okay, thanks. Short-term rental was registered with the county prior to the law on Rhinebeck. Are they grandfathered?
No, there's no grandfathering.
Okay. Second, comments by Warren or Planty?
And I don't think there was a register with the county previous to this.
Oh, yeah. Mine was registered in '23.
I'm not aware of one, and it wasn't illegal in Rhinebeck previous to this law? Short-term rentals were not legal in Rhinebeck?
Well, I was paying room tax, that's the county.
Ah, interesting.
Yeah. So the other question is, in 2022, the article on Freeman, by, you know, by the attorney that this primary residence was not going to be in the law. Are you concerned that some people may be misled by that article?
I can't comment. I don't know what you're referring to. This law does require it to be someone's primary residence.
Right. So you're not aware of the article in Freeman?
I don't recall.
Where Warren or Planty said that this would not be in Rhinebeck's law?
No, I don't recall.
Would you like a copy of it?
You can give it to the clerk.
Okay.
I think this law, regardless of what was said previously by the press...
Who's the question?
Uh, Joan.
Hey, Joan.
Hi, dear. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions, Nick?
No, thank you.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the town board? By Roe, Co., void co-vote, I think, correct, Michael? Closing the public hearing. I have a motion to close the public hearing just for the amended short-term rentals.
Motion.
Chauncey, thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Dana. In favor of closing the public hearing for the short-term rentals?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Vote by Roe, by Lloyds, Alan?
Aye.
Chauncey?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
And I vote yes as well. It passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Michael. We have one more piece of business to take care of with the board here. Let's just, we still have a public hearing open for zoning amendments. If you could go to tab 25, please, resolution 2025-233. It's some vehicle and traffic specifics for Rhine Cliff. Again, it's tab 25. Can we hold them? Oh, of course. We didn't pass the law, so this will be tabled until the 27th. It's rusty tonight. Okay, tabled. Do you have any other business with me? Oh, thank you. Yeah, that was a great summary, too. Tab 11, please, 2025-219. May I have a motion for resolution 2025-219 approving the MOU with Hudson Valley Regional Council for methane monitoring study at our cap...
Super resolution, Joan.
Yes.
Before you make the motion, just so that the public is aware, there was one small amendment to this MOU from what appears in the public copy that was posted. Today, I was able to get contact with HVRC and clarify with them that the town will also be an additional insured on any insurance policy that's taken out by HVRC to this landfill project. So the amended version is in your packets. And when moved, you should move to adopt it as amended today.
Okay, thank you. Where am I with this? Motion to...
Motion to adopt as amended.
I think we have to motion it to the... Can I motion to adopt as amended or...
Yes.
Thank you, Dana. May I have a second?
Aye.
That's Alan. This is amended to say that the tab will also be named as additional insured. Are there any questions or comments from anyone on board?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. So we're... Tableling 27, 25. Great. Michael, thank you, and we will look for an amended resolution before we move to the next meeting.
Thank you. Thank you.
We still have a public hearing open. If you could go to tab three. Michael, thank you for being patient. Michael, uh, come on, Michael, Alan. Thank you, Michael. This is a local, I need a motion to, for a local law amending and strengthening certain enforcement provisions of chapter 125 of the Town of Rhinebeck Town Code and the Town of Rhinebeck zoning law. May I have a motion? Thank you, Alan. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Kim, take it away.
Sure. So recently, the town has experienced a lot of instances where property owners have done work or improvements on their property without receiving the necessary permits, site plan, special use permit, variances from the zoning board, and it's resulted in a lot of notice violations from the building code enforcement officer and a lot of the planning board and zoning boards having to review these improvements exposed factor, which is not great for understanding what the project is and including it. So this amendment is to just kind of provide a little bit more authority for the enforcement officer to be able to issue notice violations. It also requires that applicants, you know, understand that they have to go through certain processes and provide certain information for the building department to be able to look at the work that's being done, make sure it's being done in accordance with any approvals that have been granted, and just kind of provide a way for the board to get a better handle on improvements in the way that they should be getting all the approvals from the site plan, special use permits, or zoning law.
Any questions? Any comments from the, anyone in the audience? Joan, can we close this public hearing? Have we received comments or are we keeping this open?
So we haven't received comments from Dutchess County Planning Board. We should be getting them soon. If the board would like, they can close a public hearing and we'll wait for those comments to come back from the planning. And I don't anticipate a lot of issues, but if there's any substantial comments, we can always reopen the public hearing.
I prefer to keep it open.
Sure.
Until the 27th.
Okay.
Is that okay?
That's fine.
Great, thank you. We will keep this open until the 27th as well. Great, moving along. Thanks. Can we be back on the 27th?
Yes, I'll be available.
Thank you very much. Okay, tab four. This is Michael's hour, hour, here.
Hour.
Minute, five minutes. This is resolution 2025-212, authorizing the town to enter into an agreement with the Sisters of St. Ursula of the Blessed Virgin of New York in connection with the property located at 5077 Lindwood Road. I'd like to make a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks. This is a pretty exciting proposition for us, and I'm going to let Michael Zarin, Zarin Stein, let's explain it for us.
Okay. Thank you, and good evening, everyone.
Thanks, Kim.
For those of you that might know this property, it's about approximately 51 acre property right on the Hudson River. Truly unique, a beautiful property owned and operated by the Sisters of St. Ursula, Blessed Sacrament of New York, for many, many years. This order now is aging, and they've decided to sell the property. And discussions began between the town and the sisters on how the town might be able to cooperate with them in the selling of the property and also just trying to understand each other's vision for what this property could be or not be. And the visions, I think, align, and that's the very, I think, special part about this agreement and working relationship that's proposed in this agreement. Both parties wanted to preserve this very sensitive property and to maximize its use and public benefit for a potential hospitality or other use that would bring people to the river, have the public have access to it, and also be put back on the tax rolls and really preserve this property and perpetuity as a productive and frankly, beautiful and sensitive property. So the parties had discussions on how they could achieve that and came up with this short agreement that memorialized what would be a cooperative relationship to try to realize this shared vision. And the idea was that the town would assist the sisters in marketing the property and discussing potential opportunities and interacting with prospective purchasers and try to find a prospective purchaser that really shares both visions that the town and the sisters might have for it. Now, there are some unique provisions, but in essence, it really does capture, I think, a very sort of special and unique proactive and collaborative relationship between the sisters, who are long members of your community, and the town, who has aspirations for a very special and unique property. So this will not be a formal quote-unquote partnership. The sisters will have the final say in who purchases it. They have their own counsel. In fact, it was interesting when, to sell this property, the sisters must receive, and this is typical New York State Attorney General approval for the sale of religious properties. And when the Attorney General's Office, Charities Bureau, heard about the discussions that was ongoing between the town and the sisters, the Attorney General's Office said you would be remiss if you didn't take advantage and really work with the town in this endeavor and really try to establish a good working relationship and some type of working relationship. So they will have the final say. The sisters will be the entity who will pay for any consultants that we bring on board. We will bring probably a consultant on to assist the sisters and ourselves in pricing the property and what type of potential zoning might be necessary to make it viable for a track, the type of developer that will put it back on the tax rolls and create this sort of amenities and public benefits that we've talked about. Also, this agreement does not commit, this is important, the town to any particular outcome. In other words, once it's sold to a prospective purchaser, that purchaser still has to go through the normal review and land use review process. And this agreement is very specific that the town cannot commit to any particular outcome. It could condition any final approval, deny it reserves all its rights under its normal review process. So what this really is, is an agreement to cooperate and to work together to try to really find a prospective purchaser that could reflect the vision, the shared visions of the sisters and the town, and really do something special with this pretty unique and special property.
Are there any questions from board members or comments?
I have a question. If, I mean, right now, the zone is 20 acre.
To the 28, has HP 20, the historic property...
So if it's sold to a commercial operation of any kind, it's having to rezone?
No, it's interesting. The town already has a, you know, most of the structures on the property are historically desiccated.
Right.
Even the dormitory from the city.
So you have, you have constraints on those properties. On the other hand, they really do present opportunity. So you already have, for example, a repurposing provision that gives the town the discretion to waive certain dimensional and other requirements from the zoning. However, when you go and you look at that repurposing, it's pretty narrow and pretty constrained and rigid provision. So one, so one, I'm probably not even answering your question in the sense that, no, it wouldn't have to be rezoned, but I found, and we've done this in other municipalities, this sort of arrangement, is you go out to the market with a vision and you say, what do you need to make, to meet this vision? And let's the market tell you what some of their needs are, and then the town and the sisters will evaluate that and have specialists and experts on our behalf say what, if any, zoning would be necessary, and then consider that. And that, quite frankly, is where the rubber hits the road, when, when they come in with a proposal and, you know, need potential rezoning is, where do you find that quote-unquote sweet spot? And then again, as you probably know, zoning is at the absolute discretion of the municipality.
Of the town board.
Town board, you reserve that right.
So the answer to my question is yes.
Perhaps, most likely.
I just want to say something. Sister Kathy contacted me last winter, let me know that they were aging and wanted to sell it, and immediately called Michael Zarin. This is his valley, what he's famous for this, among many other things, but...
Not things we can talk about.
What's important to us is that this property be on the tax roll, you know, that it not... It's an amazing piece of property, that it be, and this is important to the sisters too. They did not want a billionaire to buy it and own it, and a lot of the buildings can't be torn down. They wanted it to have a benefit for the town. And we want it on the tax rolls. They're, they currently do retreats or, what do you call it there? They do... They do.
Virage and counter.
Sorry?
Virage and counter, or that kind of stuff.
No, they do, they have.
They're worded.
They have charitable and religious retreats and.
They use it for, I guess, a hospital, but they have people coming for retreats and programs. They have housing there, they have a swimming pool, they have a restaurant cafeteria, there's infrastructure there. For us, it was also important that the public have some kind of access, that the townspeople have access to this property, which is absolutely stunning. And it was important to the sisters and to us that the environmental integrity of the property be respected and preserved. So it's an old estate that was given solely to the Sisters of St. Ursula. It is not owned by the church or the diocese, it's owned by the sisters, and they want it to be, you know, a hospitality, so this could be good for our businesses, good for our town, and we could have a hand in deciding, or seeing that what goes in there is of the correct scale and flavor to reflect the aims of our comprehensive plan in our town. You know, we don't want a thousand-room carnival there, we might want something more demure and in keeping with the scale of our town. So we think it's a win-win, and we're gonna.
But it's important to stress, and there was some, you know, internal discussion about this on the board and good input, that at the end of the day, the sisters make the final decision.
It's their property.
It's their property, and we are not, we, the town is not going to receive the proceeds, you know, we have no proprietary interest in it. We will try to encourage and move the needle and work with them and see if we can really find that sweet spot of the type of, you know, visions and objectives that both parties have, but at the end of the day.
It's up to the sisters.
They make the final decision, and they need the approval of, they have an international entity that has to approve it, their order is an international order that had to sign off on this agreement, in fact, and the state, and the state Attorney General Office has a specific charities bureau that must sign off on anything.
Their general counsel is an international counsel with the, there are Ursula and sisters in France and in Africa and here, so there are delegates from each of the convents that decide on this. It's exciting, and we're hopeful, but it's not, it's not a done deal. So any questions or comments from anyone in the audience? Deb.
Two quick things. First of all, thanks for explaining that in such detail. It really just sounds like such a wonderful venture for both, you know, for everyone and for all of us. Alyssa, you mentioned the idea of it being open to the Rhinebeck public. Does that mean that even if there's, if it's like a hospitality place, like, I wouldn't necessarily have to be staying there.
We don't know yet.
So you don't know?
We don't know. This was a desire of ours that the sisters were open to. Again, as Michael said, they have.
The final.
We seem to be aligned, but they're going to have to, at the end of the day, make the decision that's best for them. And then we have.
The way we did it in another municipality that we probably do it here is, we will work with them to prepare an offering brochure, sort of playing, you know, almost broker in that respect, that reflects the vision, the shared vision that we just articulated. So, and then we will go to the market.
See what.
And one of the visions that will be articulated, because at the end of the day, we will collaborate and discuss together who we think can meet, has met that vision, and they've got to get their purchase price. And one of the, there'll be a list of objectives that the sisters and we are looking at in this offering statement, and we will be, one of those will be saying that whatever proposal, development proposal or program you have for it, we would like to see a form of public access.
Right.
And then we'll get, we did this in another municipality, we got incredible response, and, you know, all of it, a very wide variety and diversity of responses, but most of them at least reflected, to some extent, different levels, the vision that was being put out to the market, saying, this is what we're looking for. You tell us how you can do it, you know, based on your capacity and your programming and your economics, and what you need, and we'll, we'll tell you what we need. We being the collective town sisters, and see if we can reach a consensus. It's, as Supa said, it's not a done deal, it's a very dynamic process, it's a real proactive attempt to try to accomplish something, and it's, you know, not a lot of, not a lot of downside in a sense.
We figure we have nothing to lose. We have, we have to pay for Michael's time, he's well worth it, and it's an opportunity for the town. So we figured that, why not?
Right.
Now?
I can't opine on whether I'm worth it.
We believe he's worth it, but we'll see.
I can talk about the process.
Once the deal has been completed, will there be any residual connection between the nuns and the site, or is it a clean cut?
Sale.
So no, they have, okay.
They're all, sorry, Michael, they're all aging, and their, the decision to sell this was based on that. There are very few sisters left in this area, and I think only two were living there, and they need a different place to live and a different level of care. Any other comments or questions? Okay, question, board, you're good with this?
Nope. I think it's fantastic, and thank you for coming up with this idea in the first place.
Let's see what happens. Okay, let's do a vote on, where are we?
Tab 4.
Thank you. The worst time of the year for me is, you'll see right after this, because I have a big mea culpa, but let's take a vote in 2025.
Question, please. Have we had a motion and a second on, it's 212, right?
Yeah, we did. I motioned in the second.
Okay. We refer in one of the, whereas closes to the attached agreement on my copy, which doesn't have, I know I saw the last draft, I believe it's most recent draft, but it's not attached to the resolution.
I'm sorry, what is an attach? Oh, yes, you're right, it's not.
I just know it's last, because I saw it in the house, but.
We haven't, did we receive it?
I just.
Okay, so we don't have the MOU attached.
I understand, I'm just pointing it out, because if we pass this resolution without it attached, have we done something that's moved, we have to do it all over again? Or not? I don't know.
You've seen the resolution. I mean, you've seen the MOU.
Yes, and it was filed.
Right.
Did we not get it?
It didn't make it from the board to make.
Didn't make it from the board to.
If the board already saw it, I was not included in that.
Okay.
I don't know what your, your practice is. Are all agreements included in your package?
Oh, yeah, oh, sure. Well, and this one specifically says the agreement is attached. That's why I asked a question. Sorry to be so much trouble.
Hold on, I'm looking. I'm looking. Let's table this for a minute and come back to it.
The sisters have signed it. The copy that you all saw, we wanted them to sign it first.
Good.
Right, correct.
Can you forward it to the town board? Anne, Joan, and Michael? Thank you.
Okay, we all commented on this, and I believe this is.
Oh, I know, because it's in Michael's file, not the one we're looking at, it's in Zarin.
All right, there we go.
Thank you.
No, I couldn't find it either. I went looking for it, and I couldn't find it in my file. You didn't write this in disappearing ink or something?
No, not that good.
I couldn't find it, I looked every place.
Well, it's PPT agreement, so if you're doing a search for MOU, it doesn't, it didn't pop up for me on MOU.
No, I have a line in my email.
Do you want to see this before you vote?
No, 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 I'm just pointing out, we would be adopting a resolution that's wrong. I'm sure we can find a way to fix it. Previously reviewed and signed by the sisters, point something like that in, I don't know.
Let's amend this resolution to say, on the second resolve, that the town of Rhinebork does hereby approve the attached agreement dated 9/08/25. The Rhinebeck PPP agreement is signed by the Sisters of St. Ursula. Does that?
Michael's nodding, so you got it right.
Joan, did you get that amendment?
I did.
Okay, so we have an amended resolution, and you're fine with that, and Michael's fine with that, and Joan, you now have the MOU. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, thank you for coming.
I'm sorry if we.
No. There's always, problems happen and then you solve them, which is a good segue into my next thing. The worst time, I think, is the most stressful time for me, so I missed two resolutions. We're going to back up here regarding our short-term rental agreement. Michael, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you very much.
Connie, enjoy dinner, good to see you. And you'll tell, you'll get in touch with me, you need to move me on.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
We need to, we have a seeker and Tab 23, Resolution 2025-231 and 2025-232, may I have a motion to open both of those resolutions?
Motion.
Thank you, Chad, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, and I'll, this way, what I did wrong, please, Michael?
Well, you asked me what else I had, and I didn't point out the Tab 23 was the predicate part to Tab 24. So in re-adopting your short-term rental law, I think reasonable legal minds can disagree about whether short-term rental laws are subject to seeker at all, the State Environmental Quality Review Act. In a bit of a belts and suspenders approach, we recommended that you consider it an unlisted action, meaning that the town considered the potential environmental impacts of the short-term rental law. The supervisor, with my assistance, produced an environmental assessment form, which finds no environmental impacts. So Resolution 2025-231 is the board adopting the proposed findings from the environmental assessment form and declaring that there is a negative declaration under seeker, so that proceed to adopt the short-term rental law under Tab 24.
Thank you. All in favor of our seeker for short-term rental law, Resolution 2025-231?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. And then now, 2025-233, adopting our local law, which we voted on, but we're going to do it again. I guess I was looking for it at the end of the, it's fine, it's here, with the roll vote. 2025-232, by, roll call again, Chad?
Aye, yes.
Dana?
Aye, yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Chauncey?
Aye.
And I vote yes as well. Passes unanimously. I think we did it now. Okay.
My apologies.
No, thanks for fixing it. All right. Backing up here. Anything else we want to take out of order, or are we good here? Tab 5, 2025-213, Rhinebeck Fire Department to use the cemetery building for training. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Dana, may I have a second? Any comments, questions, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I think we did it last year, and it worked out very well. May I have a motion for Tab 6, 2025? If I could get it out, that would be great. 2025-214, approve the cemetery cleanup day, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Chauncey, may I have a second? Thank you, Alan. This is to approve the cemetery cleanup day. Any comments, questions, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. I need a motion for 2025-215 to approve the destruction of documents for LGS1.
Motion.
Thank you. Dana, may I have a second? Was that you, Alan?
Yes.
Okay. This is, we have Pat Coon working with Joan, our records officer, and they're cleaning out a lot of stuff, and as they go, they are destroying what they are legally able to. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Tab 8, 2025-216, create position of records clerk, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Chauncey, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alan. Again, Pat Coon, the former village clerk, is working with us here as a records clerk, and we're creating a year-round, part-time position for her, and we figure at the rate she's going, the town should be cleaned up with records, what, five years' term? Okay, so it's a long-term goal. Any comments, questions, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Tab 9, 2025, I will make a motion for 2025-217, scheduling of special meetings for the budget workshop, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alan. I'd like to amend this, I want to skip this week and work on it next week. Chellee and I have some work to do with supervisors' reports, fund balances, and several other reports. I want to generate a capital projects list and make sure that we know where all of our money from this year is going to go, what the leftover money and what we have, so you can make some decisions. I have left for you the, considering giving elected officials raises, and there's some discretionary money to fund a project as we like, and then we'll look at where the money is within the existing capital projects and move it around if we want to. So I'm amending this to, our first budget workshop will be Tuesday, October 14th at 1:00 p.m. The public's welcome.
Not the 7th?
No, I'm striking, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, we were only doing Thursday this week.
Right.
See, I am listening. Yes, it will be Tuesday, October 7th. Hold on one moment. And calcium, which, just give me the, great, at 1:00 p.m., Tuesday, October 7th, at 1:00 p.m. Does that still work for everybody?
Yep.
So it's Tuesday, October 7th, Tuesday, October 14th if needed, and Thursday, October 16th if needed. Public is welcome, it's a workshop for the board. All, any comments, questions, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thanks, Deb. Okay. Tab 10, 2025-218, Clearwater docking request, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Chad, may I have a second?
Right.
Thank you, Chaunce. Clearwater's a great non-for-profit, they're going to use our dock for some of their clear water business, and we're happy to have them. I have a friend who's the captain, and a friend who's one of their head of development boss.
Do you have dates for Clearwater's docking?
I'm sorry, it's right here in the resolution. They will be docking at the Rhine Cliff Pond Dock from October 19th to the 20th, and that's it.
Thank you.
And we figure parking is pretty, I thought we have our parking lot placed, but we don't, but they don't take that many people, and I think that they've done it before, and there hasn't been a big issue, so we're happy to have them. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, we're happy to have that Clearwater. We've done the MOU with Hudson Valley Regional Council. Tab 12, 2025-220, hiring Jennifer Deversera, a personal assistant, a payroll clerk. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Dana, may I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Alan. We created a full-time position after many, many years in our bookkeeping department, which is woefully overworked and understaffed. So this is the full-time payroll clerk who will also take on some additional duties like HR, compliance with. like HR, compliance with state training, health insurance, and anything else needed as identified by myself and the bookkeeper to the supervisor, Shelley Day. So, Jennifer was lovely, we did interviews, and we're thrilled that she's joining us. I think in her 30 career, she's had three positions and comes highly recommended. Any comments, questions, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Tab 13, 2025-221, and I'm going to do them both together. Tab 14, 2025-222, Adopt Climate Smart Action Plan and Adopt Climate Smart Adaptation Plan. See, it's slightly different. May I have a, may I have a motion for both?
Motion.
Thank you, Dana. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Chad? Are there any comments, questions, or concerns? This is the work that Seep did for us last year, and we are adopting these two plans that I think we discussed here in February, but we didn't adopt them, and I don't know why.
They wanted time for the public to...
Read it.
And then make comments, and then there were no comments.
So, it's September now, so that's a little bit of time. So, it'll be on our website. It's good work, and it helps us stay on point for monitoring our carbon emissions and any other policies that we have to keep our environment healthy. Any comments, questions, or concerns from the town board? Voting on two resolutions here, 2025-220, 2025-221. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Tab 15, 2025-223, Recreational Tourism Ambassador Training. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Dana. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. This is something that the county is offering, and our rec director and another rec person for the summer is going to attend for $25 at the Millbrook State. Where's it held, Dana? You know, in Millbrook, where the farm and market's been. Any comments, questions, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I need a motion for 2025-224, Turf Field Meetings Contract. We did it last year, we're going to do it again.
Motion.
Thanks, Chad. May I have a second?
Second.
Dana, thank you. Any comments, questions, or concerns? It's really just maintaining our turf field, making sure it's in good shape, and that we are protecting our investment there. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Tab 17, 2025-225, Our Recreational Program Refund. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Chauncey. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dana. Any comments, questions, or concerns? This is the recommendation of our rec director. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Tab 18, 2025-226, Recreation Program for the Fall Festival. May I have a motion? Thank you, Dana. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alan. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I'm going to take the next two together. I'm looking for a motion for 2025-227 for our men's indoor soccer recreational program, and 2025-228 for our recreation department Skate Jam. She used to be quite popular. Thank you, Alan. May I have a second? Thank you, Dana. Any comments, questions, or concerns? There's also a rain date in for Skate Jam, which we forgot to do the last time, but I think they emptied it out. That was before the torrential downpour in September. I don't know how they did it, but they fit it in before the heavens opened up.
Yeah.
So, and it's great to see them out there in Rhineburg. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes, I vote yes to, passes unanimously. Thank you. That's a lot of stuff. Tab 21, 2025-229, Bachi Court Reservation System. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Chad. May I have a second? Thank you, Dana. Any comments, questions, or concern? You wouldn't think that we'd need a Bachi Court Reservation System.
We need a Bachi.
But we need one.
Which is good.
Any comments, questions, or concerns from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We've done 23 and 24. We're holding over 25. We're holding over 26. And I'm going to make a motion for Tabs 27, 28, 29.
You're going to do 22?
2025-235, 2025-236, and 2025-237. Our preliminary accounts abstracts, our budget transfers, and our capital projects abstracts. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chauncey. Any comments, questions, or concerns from the board about these three? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I omitted Tab 22, 2025-030. I think this is Dana Colleen Peterson. We're disposing of a small piece of equipment, not a large one.
You had a power tool?
It is not. It is a printer. I guess Chad, would you like to motion that? I think Dana's out.
Motion.
Thanks, Chad. Is there a second?
Second.
It doesn't have wheels. She doesn't want to motion that. Thanks, Chauncey. All in favor of disposing of this printer without wheels?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. I think we've gotten through all the business. I wanted to bring up that last year, we had a plethora of complaints about sheep and wool traffic on local roads. I talked to Bill Beal, our newly appointed commissioner of County E911. He thinks fair traffic should be off local roads. I talked to Pete Dunn. He thinks that it'll make traffic glom up by the hospital. State police weighed in, and he said the same thing. The county police said at your discretion. The fairgrounds said it's not our thing. I think we just realized that the sheep and wool is the singular most busy traffic day in Rhinebeck. In the afternoon, when every, like, all 25,000 people leave at 5:00, and part of the town becomes a parking lot. So, you all need to be aware, and you need to plan accordingly, because we're not going to do anything about the traffic. But thanks for letting us know that it's happening. We know. I live on the hook. I don't leave until like 8:00, or, you know, just stay home.
Sheep and wool house arrest is a time limit.
Yeah, it's a voluntary house arrest. Stay home, stay cozy. And then, fall foliage permitting process. I don't know if there's anything to talk about. The fall foliage is permitted. Dana, you want to take this?
Yeah, absolutely. So, they, we gave them a pretty hefty list of things to do. They cooperated with Dutchess County E911 and the village police to ensure the safety for everyone there. And the main kind of upgrade from prior years is there's going to be a lighted sign leading up to the event at kind of those choke points where drivers are entering, because the main thing is making sure people are aware and know. So, everyone will receive, or already has received, this fancy little postcard. It has a snap code if you want to check out more. And so, before anyone can get onto the roads that have this, they will see that lighted sign. If they live there or own a property there, they will have received this. If someone downstate is coming up, they'll look at the postcard, and it will tell them not to come up if they're averse to it. They're only going to put the porta-potties within the right of way. I understand they have made mistakes in the past, and I have asked Mike Giacola, who specifically told me there was an issue. I said, hey, dude, send me a map, show me where the problems are, and I'll show it to their driver. I'll make sure he sees it, because I sincerely believe they weren't trying to invade private property with the porta-potties. I think probably some of Michael's driveways look like roads, and so maybe there was some miscommunication there. So, we'll make sure that doesn't happen again. They have some volunteers lined up that are going to be assisting along the route, and I have offered some additional volunteers from the local high school group of kids that like to do volunteering.
That's great.
And they said they don't think they need the high school kids yet. They think they have enough people, but I'm trying to round up some backup there so that safety and kind of, you know, people's property is all good. And so, we should be good. And, you know, I'll just repeat, like, this is a big tradition in my household. We have run this as a family for probably the past decade. Jack has not run for the entire past decade.
Jack, are you running? Sorry to call you out, but this year?
Yes.
All right.
So, I'm thrilled that this will still be happening, and I'm crossing my fingers that Turkey Trot happens, and that as a community, we see more people out and about and doing things in real life. Because, you know, not to leave the earthly plane of our local politics aside and reach up to the federal heavens, but the world is filled with a lot of...
Stress.
Discord and ranker. And nothing is a better fantasy for that than people coming together in person and doing things as a community. And nothing is better and more fantastic for that than, like, a good, solid fitness thing that's accessible to everyone. There will be some elite runners coming up to train for the marathon, doing a half, surely. But there will also be a ton, a ton of people from Rhinebeck doing the 5K, maybe even walking it instead of running it, preparing to walk instead of run the Turkey Trot in just under 60 days.
Precisely said, Dana. Neighbors, thank you for your input and your patience.
I have a question. May I?
Yes.
Hi. First of all, thank you for everything. We got the card today in the mail, so yeah, you're welcome. I read all the emails from Kim Garrison.
Coruso.
Coruso.
That was Kim Garrison. Kim Garrison's our attorney.
That's right.
Other Kim.
And I read the resolution from last night. Will there be volunteers at those bends along Mill Road? That I've raised concerns over the year. I just want to have that clarified.
That is the, that is the plan, and I talked to Kim, and I said, like, look, we need, we need to add folks there. And she said they have volunteers. You know, also, though, I think kind of, you know, Dutchess County E911 and village police kind of gave it their once-over thought on safety.
Can I just interject? Because I talked to Bill Beal personally about this, and he was very enthusiastic and positive about Kim and her organization, and was aware of these two areas. And Bill is rock.
Okay.
Dutchess County E911 is one of my favorite county departments, besides planning, and, but they're amazing.
I mean, being aware is good. I just want to see somebody there, because with the South Mill Road closure, we have more cars using Mill Road.
From Rhine Cliff.
To leave Rhine Cliff to go, yeah.
Yeah.
And when you have, you know, cars using, cars that should be using two lanes using one lane, right? And at those bends, creates a hazardous situation, which I'm concerned about.
It's the safety. That's what we are.
Well, I mean, the good news is, any car coming into those areas will be well aware that something is going on, because they'll have seen it from either, they'll see the lighted sign at the entrance to Mill Road, or they'll have seen the phalanx of runners as they, as they come through Rhine Cliff, right? So, you know, at some point, you have to trust people to not be completely crazy, right? Like, there's just some point at which I don't know how much more handful than can be done. So, they should be well aware. I hope we have, that the fact that they went through this with the E911, and they're aware of those concern points, I think, like...
Dana, just make him aware of it one more time. About the two areas of concern.
Do they use traffic cones? I'm trying to...
They usually put out some stuff, especially around the areas where they have the... Sean, you've run this before. Sean says yes. Maybe a spinning wheel of fireworks, something abrupt. And I will not be doing the half. I'm not as hardy as he is, but I will have my...
You're not running?
I'm going to do the 5K with Jack. Someone's got to stay behind. So, I'm going to have my, my gold and purple ribbons, and maybe when I'm done with that, maybe I'll go stand and make a big kerfuffle.
It's interesting, because I love watching. So, at the beginning, I'll be there rooting them on. They're very serious. The people at the front, this is business. They don't see you, they don't want to know.
Well, they're qualifying. They're like, they're qualified.
Say hello. I'm saying hello, I'm rooting for you. But the people in the middle and the end with the costumes and the outfits, I love them.
Yeah.
And they are so responsive to cheers and everything.
Yeah.
Those are the people I like.
Yeah, I usually stand at the corner of Russell and Morton or Kelly or whatever it is right there, and I usually have a sign, free high fives, or I just yell, like, over and over, like, you're the fastest runner on this corner of Rhine Cliff, go, go, go! You know, so it's fun. Kids are horribly embarrassed. That's probably why Jack's running this year, so he doesn't have to be a spectator.
I know, he's not embarrassed, he's here supporting us. It's like under the chair. Well, thank you for being so positive and, you know, getting, you know, I think we're in a good place.
Yeah.
As Dana eloquently said, we need this. We need every cheerful, positive thing we can get. So, thank you. Any other, anybody have anything? Nina? What was I going to say? We're at the end of our meeting. Is there any public comment on any items or anything else, Nina?
Wow, while you're talking, collaborative and building community, I'd just like to appeal to the board of the town of Rhinebeck to think about collaborating with the village of Rhinebeck to have transportation available for the whole town.
So...
The village is very proactive at this point, trying to create something, and I hope that you will collaborate with them.
We had a meeting, Chauncey and I had a meeting last week with Gary and Lydia, and we talked about their micro-transit, and we are collaborating. What we are going to do is move our senior van to our part-town fund, and we will take care of our town residents in conjunction with that. We have a lot of part-town funding. That is the tax that people inside the village pay, not general fund. We're general fund poor, part-town rich. So, we are working together with the village to support their micro-transit thing, and we will be taking care of everyone outside of the village. And I think we will look...
In that same system?
We are going to, I think, buy our own van and get a driver. We haven't figured it out yet, but now that it's not a general fund item, we have more opportunity. So, we have had for, since 2013, a volunteer-run van that we have done all in-house with no money, thanks to our clerks. The village funded a $60,000 micro-transit thing. We still operate on pennies, so we want to be very aware of this, and we want to offer something. So, we are collaborating, we are talking, we are aware of what they're doing, and we'll take care of everyone outside of the village.
And so, Nina, another point too, is that when you're looking at transit like this micro-transit, it's a big value to have it be responsive and fast. And so, within the village, those calls are really short and close for the most part. And points outside of town, it's actually kind of very reasonable for those to be kind of two different types of transit, because you don't want to be in the village trying to go four blocks, and you have to wait for the van that's going down to Linwood, and then to the train station, and then into town.
Or, you know, or Frost, or, you know, Frost Road.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, we are working with them.
But this is, this is all good. This is all part of kind of, you know, encompassing everyone with kind of a motion.
Haven't figured it out yet, but we did have a meeting, it was very positive. Thank you. And thanks for your advocacy for transportation. It's, you know, we're a rural town, and that's the downside. We have a lot of beauty and space and privacy, and then we're, we could be isolated.
We're a voter ad hoc.
Anything else from anybody? Any comments, questions, concerns? Okay, having here none, I want to thank you all for coming, and I'd like to call this meeting, adjourn this meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night. We'll see you either at a budget workshop or on October 27th.